This August 1st, 2024 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand as I ask Reverend Elgin Dixon to open us with a word of prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Our God, our Father, our help, in ages past, I hope for years to come. I pray tonight for this council meeting that you would give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on these items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefit and for your glory, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome all of you to our city council meeting this evening. As I'm sure all of you know, we advertised a special community input session for this evening, and for that reason, we have kept our regular meeting agenda short. But there are certain matters that we have to do just to take care of the city's business. So, we will start with some special presentations. Immediately following the special presentations, we will do our agenda items, which include approving purchases and reading some ordinances that relate to budget items. After that, we will start a citizens' comments period. We will begin the citizens' comment period with matters of general concern like we always do. After those are completed, we will then have a special citizens' comment period for people who wish to comment on the Stubbs Park renovation plans. So, at this time, we will begin with the special presentations, and I'd ask our Tiffany Stanley and Josh Powell to give us some information about the special presentation.
Sure. Ms. Stanley is our member consultant with GMA, and she's here to make some presentations to the mayor and council.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon and to be able to present some training certificates for some of you. Our Harold L. Holt Municipal Training Institute is an institute for elected officials to be able to take training classes on municipal government, governance, and classes that pertain like municipal law, municipal operations, and so, including your mandated elected official training. And we have five levels of certificates that you are able to be recognized for the time that you spend for taking these training classes, and they're offered twice a year at our annual conventions and our Cities United Summit, as well as spring and fall training as well across the state. And so, tonight, I have four certificates that I will be recognizing. First up is Richard Mascara, and he is earning a certificate of recognition. And with the certificate of recognition, he earned 42 hours of training hours in addition to the mandated elected official's training.
All right. Yeah, come on down. Rich? If you will, if you will stay there, we'll get a photo of all of us as one photo at the end. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Mr. Christopher Smith. He is also getting a certificate of recognition, 42 hours. And our honorable mayor, Joshua Kite, certificate of recognition for 42 hours. And earning a certificate of achievement, Ms. Tess Godfrey has earned 72 hours of training hours.
And the training provided is a partnership between Georgia Municipal Association and Florida Business Institute of Governance. Thank you.
Our Tiffany, thank you for coming to the meeting and all the work that you do in support of Dublin and other cities across our region with the Georgia Municipal Association. We'll now move to our regular agenda items. Our first item is approval of the July 18th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. You have had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any requests for changes to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We'll now move to item number two on the agenda, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
The council has all the bills and all the expenditures of the city since our last meeting in their back.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for our staff regarding the expenditures over $15,000?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith with a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. We have two purchases which we will treat together for the purposes of the motion. Mr. Powell.
First is to replace the stock of pistols for the police department. These are Glock nine-millimeter, 45 generation, fifth-generation pistols. Well, I got a mess up on that. This was for 65 of those. We'll be trading in 63 of our current handguns. The trade-in value is $18,175, and the purchase price with the trade is $51,744.15. This does include a reflex sight, weapon light, and holster. And these holsters will also accommodate the Axon Alert system, which when the weapon is taken, removed from the holster, the video cameras from the Axon system will automatically start. Staff recommends that this purchase be approved. It is from Amchar. That is the name of the company. The second purchase, well, I should say, that was budgeted $55,000 was the budget amount, so we came in under budget on that. The next item is fencing for Hillburn Park. Pickleball courts, as the council has previously approved, for the pickleball courts to be replaced at Hillburn Park. If anybody's been on those courts, they, you may know that the tennis courts were converted to pickleball a few years ago, but the concrete there on the, on the courts is in poor condition and needs to be replaced. We'll be demoing that, and a company is coming in to replace those. This item on the agenda for tonight is just for the fencing around the pickleball court. The low bid of the three we received was from Garrett Industries Spence Company for $30,500. This is being paid for out of ARPA funds that we had earmarked for park improvements, and staff asked the council to approve both of these purchases.
All right. You've heard Mr. Powell's description of the proposed purchases over $15,000. Are there any questions for Mr. Powell or staff regarding these purchases?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four, which is a first reading of an ordinance to amend the FY24 budget. Again, this is a first reading. The actual public hearing and vote on this ordinance will be at our next meeting. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2406, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend the budget for the fiscal year-end in June 30th, 2024, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. This is to keep us in compliance, and so, we are making the year-end adjustments that we typically do, and we'll have a second reading for this ordinance at our next meeting.
All right. We'll now move to item number five, which is discussion action on board appointments. At this time, we have an opening on the Economic Development Authority. This is the Dublin-Lawrence County Joint Economic Development Authority. Keith Riffen, who works at the VA, has been our representative, one of our representatives to that authority for the last eight years. He's served two terms. I had an opportunity to speak with him, and he said that he really appreciated the opportunity to serve and is appreciative of his ability to represent the city on that board over the last eight years, and is looking forward to serving in different capacities for the city in the future when we need him. He has been a great appointment. He has served two terms, and at this time, for this position, I'll nominate Edwin May to fill that position on the Economic Development Authority. This is a action that requires the vote and approval of council, so we will need a motion, a second, and a vote.
So move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Jones with a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations to Edwin May. I have had an opportunity to speak extensively with Mr. May, and he is very excited about this opportunity to serve our community on economic development issues. We also have two appointments to the Downtown Development Authority. The Downtown Development Authority works on projects in the downtown area, and there are two openings due to the resignation of Jerry Pitts and Clara Guyton. Her term is expiring, and she is moving out, she has moved her business out of the downtown area. Both of them had long years of dedicated service to the DDA. We certainly appreciate all that they have done. I've had an opportunity to work and serve with both of them, and they were excellent board members and contributed financially and through their time to the development of our city. For these two openings, I am nominating Jason Keaton and Rodney Brown. I think most people know that Jason Keaton has had a business in the downtown area for well over a decade and has worked on many projects in the downtown area. Rodney Brown with his wife Shanita Hunt-Brown work at Miller Soul Food, own and operate Miller Soul Food. I spoke with Mr. Brown. He is excited to do the training, to serve on the DDA. He's lived and worked in businesses in many other areas of the country, and excited to bring his experiences, his passion for the downtown area, to this community board. At this time, I would nominate Jason Keaton and Rodney Brown to the Dublin Downtown Development Authority. Again, this is by action of council, so we'll need a motion, a second, and an approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby with a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations to Mr. Brown and Mr. Keaton.
So, I work with clients of all ages. I have people my age who are just getting married and having kids, and they want to get a policy on them or a whole life policy on their toddler to have as they age. But I also see clients that are older, that are maybe looking for a final expense policy. I get to see clients at many different seasons of their lives. I just love Dublin. This has always been home for me. My dad and my granddad do what they love, and it's a blessing to join them in it.
Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op offers a full range of communication products and services to its members in Lawrence County and surrounding areas. We take pride in being your total communications provider, and we work hard to provide quality services at the best prices. In addition to offering phone service, we provide high-speed internet and digital high-def TV, and we always strive to put our members first. Progressive Rule, your total communications company. Small enough to know you, large enough to serve you. Progressivetel.com. Call 478-984-4201 or stop by 890 Simpson Avenue in Rents. Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op.
All right. At that time, at this time, we have completed the regular business of the city council, and we will have an opportunity now for citizens' comments. Before we get into the citizens' comments for Stubbs Park, we'll allow citizens' comments on other issues that involve the city. Is there anyone who would like to speak or provide a comment on an issue other than the Stubbs Park concepts?
Just let them know that if it, that close to seven, I'm going to have to get up and leave.
Yeah. And let me just say that we're going to handle the citizens' comments the way that we normally do, which is three minutes per comment. Our clerk, who is Heather Browning, will keep a timer. At the end of the three minutes, no matter where you are in your comments, you've got to wrap it up and let the next person go. Council will stay here as long as people want to give their input. Councilman Brown has a church obligation, so he is going to have to leave around 7:00 if we're still going at that time. He wanted everybody to know that right at the outset. And there are some other just general ground rules about citizens' comments. This is not a time for any, you know, we don't want to get personal about anything. This is not for negativity. This is for constructive comments, so that we can have the information and input from our citizens to make better decisions. So, at this time, if we have comments that are not related to Stubbs Park but on other matters, yes, ma'am, please come forward. Yeah, you'll just need to state your name and where you live, just so we can get started with each comment.
Good evening, everyone. Felicia Powell. I live on Warbass Street. I'm coming before council tonight because I just want to know when things aside from Oconee, from the gym, just the South Side in general, is going to be uplifted. I've been living in Georgia now for five years. I'm originally from New York, been living on the South Side for three years. I, honestly speaking, haven't seen any changes. It's, it's time for a change of people, places, and things, because as long as we keep everything the way it is now, our children and our futures, and I am a parent of a 15-year-old who has special needs, it's going to be gone. They're not going to have a future, because we, as adults, are not willing to make changes. Sometimes, we may have to sit aside, move aside, and let the younger generation start. When are we going to start doing that? When are we going to stop thinking for ourselves as adults? Because as we get older and we leave, we're going to need somebody to take our place. And as long as we keep thinking we're invincible and we're never going to move, things will never change. It's time for a change on the South Side, and I want to start by making my thoughts and opinions known. It's time for a change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. And I would like to, just as a matter of information, because I think it's important to take this opportunity while we have so many people here to get some additional facts out there. Ma'am, if you would, if you would like to hang around for just one second, I would just like to give you some information about projects that city council has undertaken in the South Side in the last two years. You may know that the Oconee Gym renovation, which is a $3.5 million project, is slated to start this October. It's been two years in the planning, and we're very excited to get started on that. Now, there's already been some work done at the Oconee area, including the improvements to the football field that are around there. We also have, over the last two years, two and a half years, taken the gas department out of the South Side and let the Catherine W. Gray Resource Center take that building and renovate that building for them to provide resources to the South Side community. So, that was, I think, an important action that this council has taken to provide additional resources to the South Side community. In addition, we have the Emory Thomas Auditorium, which I'm proud to announce tonight is at the very last stages. We have completed practically everything there. A new stage curtain was installed. This was a renovation project that was over half a million dollars, and I think everybody is very proud of the way the Emory Thomas Auditorium looks now. We have over 60 bookings for everything from family reunions to birthday parties, and I think that that has really become a center of the community again, and we're very proud that we were able to fund the renovation of that building. We do have, in our upcoming spliced, a million dollars set aside for renovating the South Side Fire Station. All of our Fire Station's needed work, including the South Side Fire Station, so we do have a million dollars that will be spent over the next three to five years to renovate the South Side Fire Station. This week, we are almost complete with the Pritchett Street Park improvements, which is a total redo of the playground at Pritchett Street Park. What's the status of the Pritchett Street Park? The last piece of equipment, I think, came in.
There was a piece of playground equipment that was defective, and they had to rebuild it and have sent the new one, and next week, they should finish, start finishing out the work on that. It'll probably be another two weeks before it's completed. But the playground equipment is just one phase of that project. In the future years, we'll be doing bathroom pavilions and expanding the park as well.
So, I think all of those are important public things that this council has done, but you really can't change a neighborhood until you have private investment as well. Now, a lot of the properties in the South Side neighborhood have issues with title issues. When you have someone die and their kids are spread all over the country, and it's hard to redevelop that property unless you can get sign off from all the heirs. That is why the city council has funded the land bank authority to clear title to these properties and put them in the hands of private developers to build affordable housing or to clean the lots. Now, so far, we have spent, I believe it's around $150,000 with another $500,000 committed to the land bank to help clear the properties in the South Side so that private people can come in and redevelop those properties. Ultimately, the revitalization of the South Side is in the hands of the people who live there, work there, and own property there. What we can do as a council is improve the public spaces to make those private developments more meaningful and to help speed them along. So, I would just want you to know the facts about what we're trying to do as a council to improve not just the South Side but every, every area of town, understanding that the South Side has some special problems and challenges that we have to confront.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, green and growing, invested in the communities we serve. For consumer loans, commercial loans, mortgage loans, contact us at 272-7775 or log on to CBS-LC.com. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, located on Hillcrest Parkway and downtown in the Henry Building. Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Hi, I'm Michael Whelis, and I'm inviting you to come join us this summer here at Dublin Pigly Wiggly. It's the perfect time to fire up the grill, and we have everything you need, from charcoal to fresh chicken, pork, or beef. And remember, Pigly Wiggly is a certified Angus beef retailer. Fresh vegetables are always in stock, from corn, cabbage, and green beans to squash, oak, and potatoes. We have the freshest produce around, including apples, oranges, and fresh watermelons. All our meats are cut fresh daily, and we'll be glad to custom-cut anything you want. So, come enjoy the summertime at your Dublin Pigly Wiggly. We'll see you soon.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to have comments on another issue? Mr. Hall.
My name is John Hall. I live at 307 West Gaines Street. I have two things I want to bring up. The first one, myself and clients and others who live here got their new property tax assessment. It's a 37% increase. I'll just say, I hope y'all can do something to keep us all from having to pull more hard money, hard-earned money out of our pockets to pay for, you know, taxes. The other thing is regarding the museum over here and the Historical Society. I've gotten a flurry of information today. Apparently, there's an estate sale tomorrow at the museum, and things are going to be sold, and people are not happy with how the city has handled this. Going back with the original stuff that, items that were there, has the city ever done an inventory of items that were taken over by the city and given them a value? I'm a CPA. I know how you do an inventory. It would be helpful for the citizens to know that the city took over this valuable stuff and did an inventory. What's its value? Who sold it? Who got the money? The last thing I'll say is, I think the sale of this, these private items, a lot of people are very angry because they have their stuff sitting there, that they donated. Is it too late for, I mean, what if somebody goes and sees their stuff at the auction tomorrow? They say, "Give me my stuff." You can't sell it. I mean, y'all got a mess on your hands. So, the last thing is, from the sale of all this, the money, I guess, is going to the land bank. I don't know. Who's going to get the money from the sale of the museum stuff? I actually donated a book to the museum. I should go to the auction tomorrow and get my book. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And as, again, this is a public information session. Mr. Hall, I'd like to share some information with you. The, the land bank took over the property, the, the real property. The items that were inside were with the Historic Society, the, and actually, they're here. If you have direct questions for them, Sonia Calvin and Cliff Cruz can answer your questions directly there with the land bank. They worked with Scott Thompson of the Historic Society to identify people who had items at the Historic Society that were donated, and as of yesterday, we've had multiple families come and pick up items that they had donated. If you donated a book to the Historic Society, please talk with Ms. Calvin, and she'll make sure that book gets returned to you and not sold, because we want to make sure, and there was notice published in the paper, and notices were sent to everybody that we had a record of who had donated items, saying if you had donated items, you could come pick them up. Now, I'm also proud to say that Beverly Brown, our library director, has been working with the land bank and the Historic Society to take historic items and display them at the Lawrence County Library. So, I just want you to know, even though the city has not been directly involved in this process, we have been working with the land bank to make sure that they're able to appropriately get the donated items to the right place. On your second issue, which was the tax assessment, and I want to address this because there have been a lot of questions, both online and personally with phone calls. So, I guess everybody in here maybe got a tax assessment of any property that they own in the city or county. That tax assessment was issued by the Lawrence County Tax Assessor's Office. The city of Dublin has no authority, no control, no power, no influence, nothing to do with that assessment. What we do is we set the tax rate that gets applied to that assessment. Now, at the bottom of that sheet of paper, it has estimated taxes. That estimated taxes is based on last year's rate. Now, what will happen is, this year, when all the tax assessment appeals are finished with, the tax assessor will send us what the total tax value of the property in the city of Dublin is, and then we will set a millage rate that will probably not be the same as last year's millage rate, and that will set what the actual taxes owed are going to be. Now, what normally happens is, when your value of your property goes up through a tax assessment, the amount of taxes or the rate of taxes that we apply to it gets rolled back. Now, that's going to be up to this council, probably in October, to determine how much of a rollback in that tax rate there will be. But the city of Dublin's only power is to set, set the tax rate. So, if you are interested or concerned about what your city taxes are going to be, y'all need to get involved in our October meetings when that millage rate is set. And we have been trying to set the rate low. The last two times that there were increases in your tax assessed value, we rolled back the rate, and now our city rates are under six. They're 5.9. And I would anticipate that they're going to get rolled back even further, but that's going to be up to council in October. So, I hope that clears that up.
Let them know that a school has taxes as well.
Oh, yeah. And the schools, yeah, the city's school tax is fully up to the school board. So, y'all can see that they currently have a millage rate of around 19.2, I think it is. Nineteen, so, that is, most of your taxes are going to the school system. So, if you have an issue with that school millage rate, then you need to go to your city's school board meeting and talk with them about that. The only thing we have control over is that roughly 5.9 tax rate that the city has.
And if you have a problem with your assessed value, you need to speak with the tax assessor's board for the county.
Yeah. And the tax assessor's office can handle any tax assessment values.
We do not set their values.
All right. So, I wanted to clear, thank you for bringing those issues up.
Home is more than a place. It's full of the people and moments that matter most. Providing for loved ones, expanding your horizons, or simply living the life you love. With all you have to protect, choose insurance you can count on, so you can experience more of what you live for. Country Financial. Experience more.
I think the future for Oconee Fall and Technical College is bright. We have a 99.9% placement rate at OFTC. That means the students who come at our doors are going to get a job, and we're very proud of that. We're always looking at anything that can prepare our students and our graduates to meet the needs of the workforce. Things are changing all over the world, and we want to make sure that our students are globally competitive. We want to empower our students and give them a thriving learning experience so that they can soar to new heights.
Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, mayor. I'm Cliff Cruz. I'm CEO of the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank Authority. Everything you said was right. I want to make another point. If anybody's got anything that they think is theirs, they're, they still have time to claim it. And like you said, the library spent, staff spent several days over there gathering documents and paintings and different things, artifacts, and they have carried those to the library. Any proceeds from the sale will go to the library. Land bank is not getting that money. The city's not getting that money, any proceeds from land. But if anybody's got anything over there, see me, I'll be here till the end of the meeting. But if anybody's got anything over there, see me, I'll be here till the end of the meeting. See us and we'd be glad to accommodate you any way we can.
Thank you for that clarification. So what he said is, the proceeds from the sale, from the estate sale, will go to support the Lawrence County Library. Yes?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Roy Hall, live out at Live Oakway. I know you know who I am, I know each of you. Just two quick things. Number one, I'd like to echo what the other Mr. Hall said about the taxes. My question is, do you think that our, well, we have been in an inflationary period. Do you think our taxes are going to roll back in October? Is that what they're looking at? Do we know that? And the second thing I wanted to ask about, we have now noticed, a lot of the people have noticed the speed limit that tells you you're going over 35 and a 35 and so forth. And we wanted to see, there've been a lot of questions out, because I live on Claxton Dairy and I know some of the speeds out there. We're just wondering if we can please see about getting some of these speed enforcement things out there. You know, even one would help. Past Springdale Park, I'm down at Springdale sometimes and I see people just coming by. There are kids playing, there's families there, things like that. It would really be nice to have that, to have that out there. And I know everybody on Claxton Dairy would appreciate it. That's basically all I have.
All right, thank you for that. And our city engineer is here and he's, I'm sure, has taken note of your request for this.
And I did speak to Matt about it and he said he would look in. I just thought I would mention that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And as to whether there'll be a rollback, I will say this, that when prices go up because of inflation, if we don't roll back, we have to advertise it as a tax increase. So I don't know what, council, we haven't discussed this yet, but I'm almost certain that there will be a rollback at least to some level or another. Next comment, do we have anybody else with a comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Brandon Worthy. I came here today to discuss 111 through 117 South Lawrence Street. The buildings, we purchased them in 2018, and since then, they've been unoccupied and still currently are. Now, around 2020 and 2021, Dublin Construction Company completed around 300K worth of renovations to the building inside. And unfortunately, when the construction had to come to an end, we kind of repurposed and refocused. So unfortunately, you know, now we're dealing with water issues and other things that have crept up. Since that time, we've worked with local realtor companies and have entertained some selling options and offers. So there's motion on this building, on this project. Now, starting in March of this year, we noticed that Building 111 started to have small puddles of water that were just kind of creeping up out of nowhere. So we've called our roofing company, we've had multiple inspectors come out, do all sorts of different tests, plumbers, you name it. We've had people come out to them. And now, the roof was essentially around three years old. And after three visits, two different techs and reps, they suggested that we contact the City of Dublin related to our drains. We've got some drains on the backside of the building that we were once told were part of a city easement. And then they run under the building and drain out the front onto Lawrence Street. Now, it was our understanding that the back and front drains were a part of the city easement. And after much compelling of the City of Dublin related to the drains, it was identified that at some point in time, those Lawrence Street drains were closed by either the city or someone contracted with the city when they repaved Lawrence Street. And so one of our drains was just totally blocked up with two layers of asphalt. That caused water to rush back up the pipes and out and into our building from the rear. And it's caused all sorts of different issues and whatnot. And we had to wait for a storm that happened on July 4th to actually be in the building to witness what was going on. So the drains on the rear side of the building just puddle up and come in the backside of the building. Now, we wanted to establish that the drain for 111 had been covered up, so I've got some photos there that my wife has passed around. You can see where the City of Dublin has come and cut the street and put a grate there for everything to drain out. That was very beneficial at stopping the issue that we're having. And we've literally begged the city a couple of times to, you know, provide some kind of quick actions for us. And luckily, we've gotten that first part resolved. Now, the other clay drains for the rest?
Yeah, and Mr. Worthy, if you haven't already spoken with our city engineer, Mr. Bradshaw, I would direct you to discuss the particular issues that you have with your building with Mr. Powell or Mr. Bradshaw, and they can see how they may be able to help you if possible.
All right, yes, sir. I'm familiar with Mr. Powell, we spoke once before, but I'd like to speak with Mr. Bradshaw as well.
All right. Thank you for your comments this evening. And I think we have another person who'd like to, yes?
My name is John Blackshear. I'm a resident of 604 North Church Street. As you see, y'all, about a year ago, I think y'all put that light up down North Church Street. A light was made and renovation was made in the city probably a year and a half ago. Well, anyway, in that area, if everybody, if you drive down that road, there's one stretch of area which is 604 North Church Street where there's no cement, no cement slab, where the water can come down the road all the way down, you know, to the city council here, all the way down to city hall. But anyway, there's no water drain there, no cement there. It has caused holes, it digs holes when it rains, excuse me, and it comes all the way down the street. And what I'm afraid of, I'm afraid it's going to cause some accidents, because like I said, since the development, putting in of the light, there's been a lot of traffic on that road. And like I said, I already seen my mailbox got knocked down one time. And I brought that to the attention to the post office.
So have you spoken with Mr. Bradshaw?
I spoke to Mr. Bradshaw. It's been over a year and a half ago and I ain't get, had no result, he didn't call me or anything. So I talked to the councilman, councilman Smith about it. So I just want to bring it up again and see, can we get some type of action?
All right. We'll discuss it with Mr. Powell and Mr. Bradshaw and see what's possible for that area.
Thank you.
I know that there's an intersection with Mary Street that has, there with Church and Mary, and there's been a lot of drainage issues, but we have applied for a grant through what's called the CDBG. And we were awarded that grant. What's the, do you know the amount of?
Loaded the applications in, we haven't gotten.
We haven't gotten the grant, but we're hoping to get a million?
Yes, right.
Around a million dollars to improve the drainage in that area. So these drainage projects are unfortunately very expensive, and we often have to get grant money through these federal programs to help with those. But as to your specific case, we'll follow up with staff and see what we can do. All right, thank you.
He's up by Stubbs Park. He's not that far down.
Okay.
He's up by the Stubbs Park.
Okay, all right.
You ready to meet the latest addition to the family? The money you saved us with auto owners helped make it all possible. It really is the best thing that's ever happened to me.
Excuse me?
Third best thing. Third best thing.
Auto Owners offers discounts for life, home, car, and business insurance because they think the more you protect, the more you should save. That simple human sense. Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin and Augusta if auto owners make sense for you.
You want to know why we ride? Maybe it's because everything looks better with a fresh coat. It's putting on your Sunday best and catching up with old friends. And who doesn't love going into the office? We ride because out here, we can be our true selves, jetting off. Maybe that's why.
Hey, I'm TJ with Dublin Outdoors and Powersports, formerly known as Mire's Equipment Supply. We are a full-line sales and service dealer for Can-Am Off-Road.
All right. Anyone else have a comment not related to Stubbs Park? Okay, if there are no other comments related to that, then we will start our citizens' comment period for the Stubbs Park project.
Before we start, can we get someone to bring their desires up front?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, they can.
And just so we can hear really well, if everybody would make sure their cell phones are off and speak into the microphone so we can really hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw, I have a list here, so if you can give me just a second, I'm going to go down the list.
Bloodworth.
Floyd Worth, I'm sorry.
List of what?
Give me just a second. Oh. Is this the H? Yeah, that's it.
So nobody else signed?
No.
Probably not a hit sign up.
Renee was stopping people at the door.
Hmm.
Renee was having people sign up if they were going to talk.
To do what?
To speak.
All right, so let me just provide a little bit of background information on this because I think that, you know, sometimes you just see the concepts and you have a reaction to the concept, but I think it's important to know some background facts about what we're working with here. So Stubbs Gym, I don't know if anybody has ever told me exactly when it was actually built. I think the best guess is in the 80s.
No.
About late 90s, early 2000s, 2000s, yeah.
The earliest sign up there was from 1992. Ms. Bloodworth, do you mind, I'm going to actually call down the list of people who signed up first.
I didn't know I was supposed to sign up.
That's fine.
I'm here right now to speak.
I'll put your name down and I'll get to you in just a moment, all right? If you can just have a seat, please.
I would like to speak now since I'm here, since I didn't get an opportunity to sign a sheet to speak.
Ms. Bloodworth, I have your name on the list and I will give you a call as soon as, as soon as your name is reached. And I'm going to make some prefatory comments, so if you can please have a seat and we will get to you and give you an opportunity.
I mean, you're just making changes just like that?
Yeah.
I mean, really, if you was going to do all of this, this should have been put out before.
Ms. Bloodworth, Ms. Cook was at the door with a sign sheet.
Ms. Cook didn't answer me about signing a sheet.
All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Bloodworth, you need to please sit down and you will have an opportunity to talk, as will everyone. You don't get to go first just because you stand up there.
You don't get to change it because you sit there.
Oh, wow.
All right. So let me give you some background information regarding the Stubbs Park plans. What is, what is important to know is that this gym, which was built, it appears, in the early 90s, has some maintenance issues involved with it. There's mold, the bathrooms are not in great condition, the concession stand areas have not been worked on in a long time. There are some issues with the flooring of the gym, and there's potentially some roof leaks. So the question is, what does the community need in this area? And can that need be met either by a renovation of this gym or by constructing a new facility? And that is really what I'm interested in. Now, other council members may have other things that they want to hear this evening, but I'm interested in is, how can the needs of the community be met, either through this gym or through another facility? Now, that means that we need to know, how is this gym being used? And what other uses and needs do people in the community have for the Stubbs Park area? The cost of renovating this gym, based on our experience with the Oconee Gym, is likely to be in excess of $2 million, based on the square footage of the gym. Now, that may be $2 million, it may be 1.8, it may be 3.2 million. Now, we don't have unlimited money. So the question is, is it better to spend the money renovating this early 90s gym or spending that money to build a new facility and potentially new landscaping for the Stubbs Park area? The goal of all of us as elected officials is to serve the needs of the citizens. Now, we know those needs by talking to people we know, by reaching out to people we don't know, and by listening to citizens' comments. So that's the purpose this evening, is to hear what you have to say about what needs you have in a park area, in the Stubbs Park area for our community. Now, I'll also say this, we have just completed a one-year master planning process where we had people going out into all areas of the community, asking what do they want to see in their neighborhood parks? What do they want to see in Dublin's neighborhood parks? Now, you, they, there was a lot of outreach done, but obviously, whenever you do that outreach, you're not going to reach everybody. It's sometimes hard. You can put it on social media, you can put it in the newspaper, you can show up at gyms, you can show up at parks and festivals, but you're still not going to reach everybody. You're going to reach a lot of people, but not everybody, which is why we wanted to schedule this additional hearing to allow additional input. Now, at the end of this input session, we will take all the feedback that we've received from both tonight and from all the other people who have provided input through that other process of the last year, and put it together to make a decision as to what we as a council believe will best serve the overall needs of the community. Now, again, the concept plans that are shown here are just concept plans in general. These are not the build-out plans. And one of the things that maybe is not clear is that if the gym is closed, that we will build an activity center of some size that will provide bathrooms, that will be accessible to the playground, that will provide offices for our new park director, and an area for other community projects, or other community events. Now, the, there are some other facts about the timeline that maybe also are not known. There is no proposal to close the gym soon. As a matter of fact, the gym will be open for as long as the Oconee Gym is closed. So while the Oconee Gym is closed for renovations, the Stubbs Gym will remain open. It will remain open through at least 2025. That means that the next elections will still be there, that anybody who wants to play basketball will still have an opportunity to do that, anybody who's using the Stubbs Gym now, anybody who's using the Oconee Gym now, will still have the Stubbs Gym available for at least another year and a half. The Oconee Gym, under one of the proposals, would only close after the renovated Oconee Gym is open and after the county completes its joint Dublin Lawrence Recreation Authority Gym at Southern Pines. So as some of you know, the REC Authority, which we are part of, actually Rich and Chris are representatives to the Recreation Authority, are building a large 60,000-square-foot gym at Southern Pines. And that gym is supposed to be completed in 2025. So by the end of 2025, there will be a brand-new 60,000-square-foot facility at Southern Pines and a fully renovated gym at Oconee. And it is only after those things are completed that we would, that anything would happen with Stubbs Gym. So I just wanted to make sure that that timeline was clear. And if there are any other questions that you have about the background information of this, then, you know, this will be a time to ask those questions. Now, we're not going to get into a back and forth, but if you pose questions, to the extent that we can, we'll try to answer those at the conclusion of the comments. All right? So at this time, we had.
Before, before, before we let any citizen speak, I just want to combat what you said.
Yeah.
It's unfair to the people for you to throw out numbers when those numbers aren't accurate. You can't compare the renovation of Stubbs to the renovation of Oconee Gym. It's not the same square footage and the things that Stubbs needs, Oconee doesn't, it doesn't compare.
Okay.
Oconee needs a whole lot more than what Stubbs needs. So it's unfair to the people for you to throw out big numbers and trying to scare them from doing development in that area.
Okay. Well, the number was based on $200 a square foot, which was provided by.
That's for the renovation of an entire building. Stubbs is not doing the full renovation. Their scope of work is not the same.
And as I said, I think I was pretty fair about the vast range that it could be, but when you're talking about floors, bathrooms, concessions.
I have a list, if you want me to go down my list. I have the roofing for, I'll just go down my list. The roofing for Oconee Gym was budgeted at $20,000, $50. The gym floor of Oconee Gym was $199,000. For the basketball goes is $119,000. For painting, it was $65,000. For masonry and brickwork, it was $57,000. So you're right now, you're looking at around $400-some thousand. And just for those things, basically what Stubbs need. So $500,000 is way different from 2.4 million.
All right. So obviously, the scope of work at Stubbs is still to be determined, but I think that it is fair to say that at Oconee, it was to renovate that building to a first-class facility was $200 a square foot. Now, it may not be that at Stubbs, and that's a fair point to make. We don't know what it would be. The question is, do we spend that money in a renovation or do we spend it on a brand-new building?
Now, we throwing out something that, we throwing out a concept that's not up here because now, I've never heard of us built, tearing down Stubbs, putting a whole new, building a whole new building.
The concept B indicates an activity center. And the activity center that we've discussed... And the activity center that we've discussed would include a outdoor bathroom that would serve, that would serve the playground. And in my view, the activity center should have a large enough area for voting as well. So, that's the, as you can see, it does say activity.
That concept was talking about renovating the building that's already over there, not tearing down building or new building. 'Cause now you talking about tearing down two buildings, you talking about building a new building from what you saying. So, let's not put in Stubbs not in the concept. The concept B was tearing down Stubbs Gym, putting a bigger pond up there. It was saying, and renovating, and renovating the activity center, not building. Nothing said about building a new building. Let's not add, let's not change the rules of the game as we going because these people is here trying to fool them. Let's not do that, please.
Well- Benny, would you be opposed to building a new activity center?
I would rather build a new gym. If you gonna tear it down, build a new gym. But let's hear what the people got to say.
Alright, so, I do think, and I wanna go back to what I said initially, which is, the goal of, our goal here is to receive input about how the community needs to use a facility. And so, and I want everyone to know that all the plans that we have here, all this process that we have gone through and done is to try to improve the opportunities for people who live in Dublin. Now, we wouldn't be doing this unless we were trying to make a positive difference. So, I wanna hope that all of these comments this evening are aimed at how to contribute positively to our community and what needs that you have that can be met through our actions as council.
When someone says the word "bank," what comes to mind? For most folks, it's probably money, or loans, maybe it's vaults, and safe deposit boxes, or big wooden desk. The problem is, these are all just things, and a bank is not a collection of things. A bank is a collection of stories, stories of friendship and family, of community and fellowship. But what makes a story a good one? At Morris Bank, we see stories unfold every day. And for us, a story is good when there's someone to root for, to celebrate their wins, and to walk with them through their setbacks. What I mean is, a good story needs a hero. Like when after years of saving and months of searching, a young couple finds the perfect place to start their family. Or when a cornerstone of the community, after years of success, decides that it's time to expand their reach and to grow into the future. Since nineteen fifty-four, we've been witness to the story of Middle and South Georgia, turning a new page with every goal accomplished and dream secured. If you've been around long enough, you've heard one of us say, "It pays to bank blue." Why? Well, if we've learned anything through all those years, it's that the hero of our story is you. Every win, every celebration, every home ball, every business open, every dream secured, has been your story. We've just had a front-row seat, and we can't wait to see what you do next.
So, at this time, I'd like to start with the first person who signed on the list, which is Dr. Elgin Dixon, Mr. Dick, Reverend Dixon, Dr. Dixon.
If people would not talk in the audience, we could actually hear what the people up here are talking about, please.
The Stubbs Park Gymnasium renovation should become one of the catalysts needed to address the above-listed barriers that I will talk about. Due to the following factors, demolition of Stubbs Park Gymnasium will not promote substantial progress towards addressing or eliminating some identified community areas of concern within the city of Dublin. The high level of crime for the size of the city, rise in presence of homeless individuals, availability and associated costs of affordable housing, recruitment and retention of law enforcement personnel, police officers, lack in inner-city recreation and entertainment facilities, lack of public transportation, loss of prominent centralized polling, voting place, maintaining permanency and heritage of the city's cultural and complexity. Stubbs Park Gymnasium renovation should become one of the catalysts needed to address the above-listed barriers. The conversion of this gym into a multi-functional flagship community center, as referred to in the City of Dublin's Park Plan, will surely address the major concerns expressed by citizens. The benefits of instituting this strategic, this strategy will incorporate the following: Development of a community-wide pursuit for cultural arts that include an accessible space for teaching, training, and performance. The execution of family-oriented reunion-type events wherein food preparation areas with needed appliances are available for use. A year-round additional income stream for renting out the venue for event usage. A reconfiguration of the basketball court area that will allow the area to be easily transformed for other community uses. Full-time staffing, which will lead to a commitment to maintain the facility while providing a statement of excellent customer service. The introduction of new recreational activities along with basketball that occurs on a year-round basis such as an indoor volleyball, pickleball, cornhole toss, robotics, while hosting tournaments to provide an additional income stream. The creation of an atmosphere wherein each individual who uses the facility realizes and display a sense of pride, therefore leading to the creation of a legendary environment. In conclusion, the redevelopment along with an added extension of Stubbs Gymnasium as well as the Oconee Gymnasium can transform our city's recreation and leisure time facilities into hubs of family-oriented opportunities. And overall demolition of resources without replacement options is never a viable option.
Thank you, thank you Reverend Dixon. I appreciate that. Alright, next, next on the list is Joanna Glover. Ms. Glover, is Ms. Glover here? Joanna Glover? Alright, if Ms. Glover is not here, we will move to the next, is Sally Underwood. Ms. Sally Underwood?
Hi, she come.
She come, go ask her.
Alright, we'll go back to Joanna after, go ahead, Ms. Underwood.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of me, I'm at seven oh four Epsbury Brinley Home Housing Authority, and I'm here to talk about the gym. And me personally, I think we should, you know, y'all should keep the gym and not put a pond there because you have a lot of peoples, grown folks, kids, that can't swim, don't know how to swim, and then y'all put a pond there and during the night when everybody sleep, no one's there to watch. Are y'all gonna put a guard there, lifeguard? Or, you know what I'm saying, because we love to go there and keeping the gym would be a good thing. And when y'all rebuild it, or really be handicap accessory.
Alright, thank you for your comments.
Oh, and one more thing I need to ask. And I didn't come up when you said other concerns, but the last time that we spoke, Mr. Knight, about the light by dog.
Jolly.
On Moore Street, where the red lights, you said y'all wasn't gonna put none there. It was gonna be a guard light.
Crosswalk.
But, me and everybody in Dublin think that it should be a light there because you have a lot of peoples coming down that street, be speeding. That street is not interstate, it's not ninety-five, it ain't sixteen. And I can understand the turnabout on the corner of Moore Street and Clarkston. I can understand that, but peoples do not yield. They come through that yield sign and keep on moving. And kids crossing over trying to get to the park, ain't no light, ain't no guard sign. And then, God forbid, there's some kid, your kid, y'all kid, y'all kid, grandkids, older folk, they die. What you gonna do? You know.
Alright, thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Underwood, and just as an update, after your initial comments, the city ordered a whole crosswalk package with flashing lights for that area, and it will be installed in the next three months. So, we're trying to help with that issue as much as possible. Ms. Joanna Glover, is, did she come back in, Ms. Glover? Alright, we'll pass through her to Carolyn McCune, Ms. McCune.
Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn McCune, community servant, proud member, resident of Dublin Lawrence County. My vote is to keep the gym, renovate the gym, do whatever's necessary. You can market it as a place for baby showers, senior citizen gatherings, and it's just important to me to keep it as, at a polling precinct, too. Every outside park or whatever needs are covered, an inside building, so that's another reason. And it is, I applaud what Reverend Dixon had, that's a whole, a whole concept to fill the, complete the needs of Dublin. And I was just wondering, if we had a real city planner, I think, that could put all the pieces together, A, B, C, and we'll have a theme instead of us doing this, 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 that, and maybe a construction project manager so we wouldn't haphazardly make mistakes and things. But at the end of the day, keep that, I like keeping the Stubbs. And I too agree with the previous speaker, that pond is just a death sentence for somebody. Unless you guys, unless you all want to be personally responsible for any mishaps or injuries over there, then we should delete that pond. Thank you.
If you're in the market for affordable transportation, come into Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales today. Getting to work, school, or around town every day requires dependable transportation. And that's what you'll find at Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales. We offer bank rate and in-house financing, so credit is never a problem. Come in today and see TJ, Trey, Alan, or Britt at Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales, where good deals and good people meet. Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales, online at dublinautosalesga.com. Come by and see us at six oh six East Jackson Street in Dublin, or give us a call at four seven eight two seven five twenty ten. Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales. Do you wanna feel and look healthier, younger, and full of vitality and energy? Med Spa is your solution for treatments, including skin, waxing, brow and lashes, botox, fillers, body sculpting, and laser treatment, including hair removal, the fastest and least painful anywhere. Come visit us at Med Spa and book your massages by calling Med Spa today at two seven five eight three four six. Or visit us at twenty-four hundred Bellevue Road, Suite eleven in Dublin.
Thank you, Ms. McCune. Is it Janice Daniel? I didn't see, or Javice Daniel? Yes, Jarvis Daniel, okay. Thank you for coming this evening.
Okay, my name is Jarvis Daniel, and I stay on eight fourteen North Church Street. And what I would like to come here and explain is that I would like the Stubbs Park Gym to stay because putting a pond there could put me, my little sister, my brothers', lives at risk since sometimes we like to go to the park. And most of the time, our mom is at work, and when we go to the park, we like to have fun. And we go to the gym, and I would be able to, I would be able to know my brothers and sisters are safe going to the parks by ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel, for coming this evening. I always appreciate when we have our young people show up. We definitely need to hear from the next generation, because that's what we're, that's who we're doing this for, is for you guys. Ms. Rhonda Comstey, Ms. Comstey?
Hi, I'm Rhonda Comstey, I live on Stubbs Park. And I'm, I'm here to kinda talk a little bit about, about this. I'm kinda glad to hear there's the possibility that if that gym didn't exist, that some other facility might be put up instead. And, you know, you have to look at the cost of renovating versus new, that's just common sense. But I do think that we really, when you think about, if I think about, and as I watch people use the park, you know, I see kids going to the playground, and that's a big deal. And more and more kids and families are going to the playground. I see the skate park is being used, and it need, I think it should be better, you know, but that's one piece of it, that's used now. I don't think the gym's being utilized that much now, and in the survey that went out, you know, the question is, how do you use it? But I think it's, you know, it's, it's not just the building, you have to have that whole, like Reverend Dixon said, it's not the building, it's the whole thing you put to go with the building, the staffing, the programming. Right now, you know, it's, it's understaffed, I guess you'd say. So, I'm really excited to see the effort, to really make a good decision. I think we're all having trouble envisioning. And, and the question is, and I think Reverend Dixon talked about it a great deal, it's like, well, if we had this, we could do this, if we have that, we can do that. But if we don't have a gym at all, we can't do anything. And I think in the meantime, because we're looking at probably a year or two, we need some signage. And I'm talking about, this is when the park opens, and this is when it closes, and the parking lot and the park are two different things, so don't park on the grass. I mean, simple things, so.
Thank you, Ms. Comstey. Quentin Thomas, is there a Quentin Thomas here? Yes.
Clinton, Coach Thomas.
I didn't know your first name was Quentin.
Clinton Thomas. Oh, I've been a teacher here at Dublin City School for thirty years, I've been in Parks and Recreation. And I see the north, the south side of the railroad tracks are for the kids to go to Oconee. The north side of the railroad tracks is for Stubbs Gyms. They can get to it easy, just like the editorial said, it's central located, Stubbs Gym is. I read the editorial, I think it was in the paper a couple days ago, the Stubbs Park Gym has served its legacy, its purpose. I disagree, I think there's a lot of more purpose for that facility. Okay, in the past week, the facility has been used by the community and schools, the Housing Authority, special needs programs, mental health activities, the senior citizens, of course, youth basket- course, youth basketball. I believe the new gym at Southern Pine, legacy, that's travel ball. That's going to be a travel ball gym. AAU. Okay. At the new outdoor facility, I'm not too familiar exactly, I like a roof where you can shut the door for the kids going in and be safe. I think just an outdoor facility without control, you're asking for trouble. You ask for people to come in there and gather and up be doing wrong things. I would like to see the Stubbs Park Gym be supervised similar to O'Conne Gym. And, of course, I want it to be renovated, and maybe we can use, or y'all could use, the money that you don't do here or there to help renovate it. And thank you for your consideration on these matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Thomas. Next is Latonya Brown. Latonya Brown.
For those of you that are standing outside, there are some seats now available.
Good evening, my name is Latonya Brown, I'm of our 1003 Claxton Dairy Road. I am with Lawrence County Family Connection. I am housed at Stubbs Park right now, in the Activities Building, but we also have an after-school program, summer program, and we do utilize that gym. I would love to see the gym to be renovated. Of course, there are some things that are issues with the gym, but also, I can't tell, and I think I spoke with you earlier on, Mayor, I can't tell you the countless families that I've seen to come to the gym, that actually want to get into the gym to utilize it, but after hours, after we leave, there's no one there to really supervise it for those families. There were some attendees there that were to keep it open, but the past management with the rec department, they stopped doing certain things, allowing them to come in during the daytime, or allowing them to come in after hours. So, the older crew that was coming there to maybe work out or to play ball, they were kind of pushed away, because they were told that, you know, if you're out this time of the day, you should be working, but some of them work at night, but they wanted to do it. But I know I've worked overtime, you know, later in the day, and in the evening, and there are families that actually want to get into the gym, but they're not able to get into there. Yes, there are, as I stated, some things wrong in the gym, but that's just because it hasn't been kept up in the past. And I think that this is a great addition, not only to the children that I serve, but all of the children in the community, all of the families in this community. Stubbs Park was there when I got here, and I've seen a lot of great things that can come out of it. I've even seen that since they've done the additions at the park, the numbers of families that have come. The only thing that I could say is that we really need to have a restroom there, but if we had to do anything with Stubbs Park, whether that's for a family connection, the Housing Authority, or anyone in our community, that gym needs to be there to give them something to do. We want them to be safe, we want them to have something to do, and we always talk about deterring crime. So, in order to do that, we need to put things in place for our families to be able to do.
All right. Thank you for those comments.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominey. Here at Dublin with Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than fifty years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From Moen to Renai, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin with Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day.
Another reason to be a good driver is saving money.
Yeah, the Drive Safe &amp; Save app can help make your car insurance more affordable.
Yes, Toby.
What's insurance? Bundle and save with a personal price plan. Like a good neighbor, State Farm is there.
Ms. Ray Bloodworth.
How y'all doing, once again? Chris Smith, that's your ward. I want to present you with some signatures about keeping the gym. I've been following you all for a whole year about it being a voting precinct. And I've spoken with Mayor Kite, and he was like, nobody uses gym. Okay, the gym is not open, they only vote once a year. They don't come over there, but if you don't have nobody over there, nobody won't come over there. These are signatures, and I should have some more, to keep the gym. And we want to stand with you, because it's your area, in support of you supporting the gym staying. So, we have a lot of people that signed this petition, and we want to give it to you, because it's your area.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Ms. Teresa Holliday.
Hi, my name's Teresa Holliday, I live at 109 Gola Avenue, here in Dublin. I just wanted to come down today to basically just first commend you all for the journey that you've taken this city on thus far, and the work that you've put into it. You know, it does not go unnoticed, and I know from many of us, whether we're in here today about the plans that you all are trying to present before the city today, we still see the effort and the work that you all put in. The first thing I wanted to mention was, as far as the Stubbs Park area, you know, I am in agreements for a change. I do believe that this is time, and there is time for a change. Things are moving forward, you all have taken this city into a new area, era, not only just in the Stubbs Park area, but for the city of Dublin as well. I do want to say to, you know, our citizens that are here today, I'm over awe at the many faces that are in here today with this fight. I just wish that, you know, this fight would be for other things that we have in the city as well. I do want to thank you all for what's going on as far as the O'Conne Gym. I love the fact that community, again, pulled together to make that happen. And I say that to say this, same thing with Stubbs Park, I do see that the plans have on there, that you all are offering up to present a pond in the area, or some type of body of water in the area. Am I for that? No, but I know that there's options, and there's things that you all can do to take place of that. I don't think that the plans that you have here today are final, I should hope not. I think that's why we're here today, to share our opinions on what we want to see in the area. And me, myself, I'm very prominent in the community as a leader here, I've been a leader in this community for several years, not only with the adult side, but our youth as well. And I think that, with that being said, I think that we need to look back at the fact that the reason that we're here today is to make this city better. It's not just about a body of water, it's not just about a building that's being torn down, and this is my opinion. It's not about a building being torn down, it's about us making an area that has gone deprived for so long better. You all have already started doing that, and I just don't want our citizens, and my brothers and sisters, not to lose sight of the fact of that, that you all have done so much here, and it has not been just one side. It's been every last one of you all that are sitting up here on this board right now today. At some point, you all saw these plans, you all saw these plans before we did. And I know you all had to agree upon it, whether the citizens was in that room or not, there was a decision that was made amongst all of you.
Ms. Holliday, your time's up.
Yes, I'm going to clean it up. But I just want to say thank you, and I just want to challenge everybody in here today, take that same energy that you have in this room today, and do it for what's going on with our kids. Because not only is this park very important, but everything about this city, as well as our youth, the programs that are offered, the things that these kids don't like, you know, this past summer, these kids didn't have anything other than what was offered by our government.
Ms. Holliday. All right, thank you, Ms. Holliday. That completes the names of the people who signed up.
Got a couple.
Did Ms. Glover come back in?
Got a couple people came in late.
She had to leave, okay. All right, so there may have been people who came late, and now we want to provide an opportunity for those people to speak as well. If there's anyone, so we'll start, I know you weren't here late, but you can still come on up. Is Ms. Wright here?
She's right there.
Oh.
She's been raising her hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Ms. Wright. You're behind the placard there.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was there, but I talked to the young lady up front, and she said the issue I want to talk about, that you was going to mention it, so I didn't sign up. But anyway, I'm Kenny Walters, I'm here representing the Dublin Lawrence County NAACP. We always want more voting precinct, not less. And our big issue about this whole project, is there going to be a voting precinct in close proximity in that area? It's a lot of people vote at the gym. So, we want to make sure that you are not reducing a voting precinct in the city. If anything, we need you to add some more, but we want people to vote.
All right.
That's all, that's all our biggest concern.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And, you know, I know that myself and other council members have been writing down all these comments about how the gym is used, and what your desires are for. I want to say this, that, you know, why are we here? Why are we doing this? It's only because we want to improve our town. How many years went by when you didn't necessarily have meetings to go to, to express opinions about how to invest millions of dollars into the community, into parks, into playgrounds, into activity centers? So, it's good that we're having this hard discussion now, because however this turns out, it's going to be a major investment back into our community. So, I think it's great that we're here and have this opportunity to talk.
The weather's heating up here in Middle Georgia, and the deals are hot at Dublin Nissan. So, when you come in and look for the red tag specials like this Nissan Altima, or the new restyled 2024 Frontier. So, come into Dublin Nissan during our red tag sale, and take advantage of zero percent financing, or up to $10,000 savings off of MSRP.
At Dublin Nissan, get rates as low as zero percent for thirty-six months on the Pathfinder.
And remember, Don sells Nissans well, only at Dublin Nissan.
I'm Heath Richter, and we just want to invite everybody to come on down to the Houston Clinic and check us out at our new facility. We've been in Dublin for a while now, obviously, but have a new office here, and we'd just like you to come down and see some of the new stuff we're offering, and if you need to get checked out, we'd be glad to do that for you. Got to be able to do some ultrasound-guided injections now, and physical therapy, and just a little bit better space, so hopefully we can get you in and out of here a little bit quicker.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Is there anyone else who would like to make some comments? Yes, please come down. Oh, I'm sorry, I told Ms. Wright that she could come, so do you mind letting Ms. Wright come first? Ms. Wright?
Ms. Excuse me, everyone, FDR said walk soft in an area big thick, so that's why I have on socks today. I was sitting at home looking at this on TV, and I heard the mayor say, please sit down, you know, we do have what's called Robert's Rules of Order, and then the Bible does say, respect those in authority. Okay, so now, we have two blueprints right here, for those of you that didn't know, they've been in the newspapers, they've been on the website, all you have to do is look at the plans. None of this that you see here is going to happen overnight. The O'Conne Gym is still going to be open, the Stubbs Park, well, come on, come on. Only in three minutes. They're renovating, excuse me, I stand corrected, they're renovating. So, you haven't seen it yet, give me a chance, people. I mean, I've heard all this arguments, we're not here to argue, we're here to be together as a group. People don't want the pond, I personally don't see a problem with it, because if you go to other cities, and if you look right by the O'Conne River, there's a pond, and people in the south side walk up and down the street all the time, and kids play. But you know what, my three seconds going to be up. I just want, I want to see a biking trail, I would like to see a walking trail, and I was told that there's this thing where if we don't have a pond, we can have that water thing that spools the-
Splash path.
The splash path, that's my suggestion. Everything else, y'all can talk to me at home. Oh, six oh three Hudson Drive, you can call me anytime.
I'll say this, Ms. Wright always knows what's going on, she comes to practically every meeting and really participates. Thank you again, Ms. Wright. Yes, please.
Yes, my name is Darrell Morris, and I was practically, I was raised on the south side. My mom raised six boys and six girls, we are the south side. Everybody in here know the Morris family. And one thing I have a problem with, when it comes to moving stuff out to Southern Pine, as opposed to making everything accessible over on the south side, as far as the gym, is I've always been able to go anywhere over there and have access to the park. I got a committee that I'm a part of, called the South Side Revitalization Committee, and we have an annual event where we put on every year, Memorial Day weekend, and we have not had, we do not have the access like we have had in the past. I remember Brother Kenny Waters, when they used to play ball out there and everything, we had all access to this park at any time. Now, it's just, whatever you all say, whenever you all say, we can have it. So, I just want more access and be able to go to enjoy the park like we used to.
Are you talking about Stubbs Park or O'Conne Park?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about O'Conne Park, Stubbs Park, wherever, wherever we can have access to, instead of trying to limit our ability to go in and enjoy the park.
I'll say this, because to me, that's important, that people have sort of unplanned access to parks. You know, one of the things that our rec authority does a great job of is having team sports that are through leagues and programs, and you sign up, and they have fields reserved, and that's great. Every community needs a great recreation program, but I'm a big believer in having your neighborhood parks where it's not reserved, where you can go in there and have a pickup game of basketball, or, you know, whatever sport it is that you want to have, our playgrounds and picnics and walking trails. And to me, that's what your neighborhood parks are really for, and then you can have the Southern Pines area for your organized rec sports. And, you know, that's, I think what we're trying to do is just increase the opportunities for people to have more time outside, and in their parks. So, do we have, and again, you know, the city has only taken management of our local parks as of July 1st of this year. So, this is all new for us, which is why we're trying to get all this feedback. Yes, please.
Hey, how you guys doing? I'm Nicole Barnes, I'm well-known in the community.
What's your name?
Nicole Barnes. The youth that I bought with me right here is my teammate, my team, AAU travel ball team, I utilize Stubbs Park Gym. He says servicing and helping, this is how I service and help, by taking kids off the street and utilizing that gym. So, by using that gym with people that's less fortunate, that's not able to travel to the Southern Pines Gym, or wherever else, they're able to walk and come talk to me via, use sports as a way, an outlet, you know what I'm saying? So, I want to keep the gym.
Yeah.
All right. You want to introduce yourself, and do you have any comments?
My name's Kiyeli Jackson. I mean, I love basketball, and I've been going to Stubbs Park for like, for a long time. If you move that gym, it gonna be boring. And I can't, a pond, I can't even swim in it, so it definitely gonna be boring. That's all I know about the Stubbs Parks.
All right, thank you. Yes.
I'm Kylie Spikes, I enjoy travel ball, and if you move the gym, what I'm supposed to do at the school? We go there, we practice, we play basketball, like, every day with her. We go there, we practice, we play basketball like every day with her. And why you put a pond in Stubbs Park when we got two ways of the pond?
Yes? Thank you for your comments.
My name, my name is Javon Thomas and I feel like if you move the gym, we won't have anything to do. And we have training, so without that, we won't have any training for basketball to get better at what we do.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comment. All right, I appreciate you guys coming in and giving your opinions on this. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Yes?
I'm Rebecca Dudley. I live in, on Park Place, that is basically an eye shot to the gym. I wanted to come up and give my two cents on what I think. Personally, I've worked with Ms. Brown, who has spoken already with the family connection. I've seen the types of things that people use it for. I know that it's very important to a lot of the community, more than just as a center for voting or a center for playing basketball. It does a lot of things. People come, people go, whenever they're, you know, looking to go with friends, they go to Stubbs Park. They're looking to play basketball with their friends, they're going to Stubbs Park. For the children that we had basically taken care of over that summer, I know that they really appreciated having us around, having this park, having the park, having the gym, all of it, having that around to basically just keep them entertained. Given the more or less ambiguity of the idea of having a new activity center, for example, I would say that would have a lot less applicability, I think that's the word I would look for. I definitely think that it would be less applicable to the things that people use it for currently, for what people use it for, the family connection, the, you know, the sports that people play. All of this, all of it is, sorry. All of it kind of comes together as the Stubbs Park Gym. Changing it into something else or just tearing it down entirely would be kind of beyond the purpose that people have already assigned to it. A lot of the time when, sorry, gotta get my thoughts together. A lot of the time when, in social gatherings, different events, I know that there were, there was the event that was held around it, where people would go in there, get school supplies for the new school year. They did that, the, you know, sending your children there, go play basketball, get your energy out. It's definitely a safer option that a lot more of the community can use than what other plans there are to just get rid of it entirely. I definitely think that, of course, there's the one in Oconee, there's the one around the water park, all of that, but having it there in the center of everything where everyone goes in that park is definitely an integral part of it. And changing it rather than just renovating it, making it better and making it easier for people to use it as what it is currently, seems a lot more counterintuitive than it would be if we were to just tear it down and change it into something else.
All right, thank you for your comments.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've grown to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future, that's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, member FDIC.
I believe it was a divine calling. So since I was a little girl, I think it was in me to have the compassion in the heart for it.
For me, it's an opportunity to express love and care for someone and that is returned in multitudes. I just think it's the best job in the whole world.
Whenever you're going home, you feel like you like helped someone throughout the day. You really do mean something to your clients.
You get to go in and give them the best version of yourself, you know? The love and the joy that you have, the passion in your heart and share that with them every day. It's probably the most rewarding career there is.
My name is George Hollinsworth and I live on South Side. We've been speaking about the Recreation Department, but we leaving out recreation that's been cut completely out on South Side at Oconee Gym. See, we talk about recreation, but we not having recreation at Oconee Gym. The only thing that we just finished doing at Oconee Gym was giving out food for breakfast and lunch for kids in the community. What we're having now, we have a facility over on South Side that's not being used. It's closed. There's nobody there.
It's not closed?
And, and that's the problem, we talking about doing all this stuff for the Recreation Department when we done cut the Recreation Department out. Plus, it's not open. So I'm trying to understand, what are we talking about a Recreation Department when it's closed?
Let me just ask, is the, is the Oconee Gym closed?
No.
The Oconee, the Oconee, the Oconee Gym's not closed, so I don't know.
It's locked.
It's open for free, it's open for free play every day, every afternoon, except for Friday. Yeah.
All right, so, all right, so Ms. Chain, would you like to make comments?
Yes, my name is Brenda Chain and I am the county commissioner for both of these areas where these gyms are. So I've had lots of people to reach out to me about their concerns about, especially about the Stubbs Park Gym being torn down. And the consensus that I've gotten from all of the people that I've talked to, they do not want this facility torn down. They want this facility renovated so that they can have activities and they want accessibility. They want to be, be able to get in and out of that gym, not be policed, closed so that they cannot get in. And that is the case, like he was talking about, it's true. It is, the gym over there in Oconee, you can say it's been closed. Because we was down there this summer and the children was not able to get in that gym because nobody was there after July the 2nd, after July the 1st, when y'all took over. The children that was there for the, out in the summer, they couldn't get in that gym to do the regular stuff that they need, they wanted to do. And they haven't even started back to school now and they can't get in that gym to do free play or anything. Okay, like I said, I, my, the main thing that I personally don't like about this plan is the pond. I don't like the pond part because I think that that is too much of a liability. That is too much of a liability for that area, for those children to be, have, take a chance of if it's just one child, take a chance of one child slipping out, they go over there and get die in that pond. I mean, that's my personal thing, but like I said, the consensus that I've been getting is that they would like to keep that gym open, renovated, without the pond. And I'm just speaking for the people that have reached out to me, because I am the county commissioner for both of these gyms.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Heather Dudley. I live on Stubbs Park and so I spend a great deal of time looking out the, out my window and seeing how people use the park. So I've got a pretty good idea of it and that's my baby over here that spoke a moment ago, so. 1.9 miles, I Googled it when I came in here, that's how far it is from Stubbs Park to the Oconee Gymnasium. Doesn't sound like much, because I mean, that's closer to here than it was over there. Like when I drove, I drove far, less than that to get there. But the problem is, most of the people who use the park don't drive, they walk. I see very few cars parked out there. When they do, they do tend to park, as Ms. Rhonda said, on the grass. Y'all use the parking lot, it's right there. But 1.9 miles is a long way to go for some kids who just want to get away from home. I wouldn't let my kids at eight, nine, 10, walk two miles away from home just to go play basketball. 1.9 miles is a long way to walk. If that's, let's say that's where you end up moving the polling places. The Dublin Housing Authority's right there. The people that live there are going to walk to that gym, because they're not going to drive two miles down the road. They're not going to drive, how many miles is it to Southern Pines? That's not an option for most of the people that live in our neighborhood. It's a long way, you know? We talked about the school supplies event. Almost all the families that I saw there for that event walked there. They're not driving, you know, I, my, my kids go to Dublin City Schools. I pick up their friends because their moms and dads don't have cars to drive them around to go to places. So I drive them, because I can do that. I'm very privileged in that way. I've only lived here in Dublin for about three years, but from what my understanding, Stubbs Park used to be a huge centerpiece for city events. People had all kinds of things going there. Since I've been here, I saw the Bragg and I saw, I think they do the blessing for the animals and that's really been about it. There used to be all kinds of things that happened. I've heard, "Oh yeah, we used to do this down in Stubbs Park." Well, what happened? You know, why don't we have more things in this park? And, you know, the gym itself is good for the community itself. The people who live there really do use it. They use it to hang out, they use it to play basketball. My kid helped do childcare over there during the summer. This is where these kids are going. Are they going to be able to go to Southern Pines if their, if their parents are working and they need that childcare program from the Lawrence Group? You know, we, we talk about crime a lot. Yeah, there's crime in this city, so we're going to take away the easiest place for them to go hang out and do things that aren't crime-related? You know? I see this, I see this every day. I see 90% of the people that use the park walk there. And that's something we've got to consider. We want a walkable city. I know that's a big draw for downtown. Mark it on Madison, park here, stay here, walk here. Let's not make people drive to get everywhere they need to go.
I'm sorry, I missed your, I missed your name.
Heather Dudley.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else have comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I am Elizabeth Dudley. I live on Stubbs Park. My main concern is about the homeless people. There are a lot of homeless people in this city and I know that the gym, it's an important place for them to go. It's a place where they can go and have shelter, they can get away from this heat wave, away from storms, all of this. Where are they going to go? This place, they need somewhere to go. We can't just leave them out in the middle of nowhere. We can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else?
Quality products and installation since 1985, that's Four Seasons.
We invite y'all to come down to Holy Smokes Barbecue, Dublin's fresh everyday barbecue source. 1100 Hillcrest Parkway, 272 Ribs. You can place your orders online, dublinbbq.com. We're all about faith, family, and friends. And remember, life's too short to eat bad barbecue. We're so thankful for you, Dublin. You guys have been so good to us and we just want to invite you guys just to come on and experience what we think good barbecue is.
These five of you all represent that gym. That gym is in your district. And I want to do, y'all really relate, understand what all these people are coming saying. You know, a lot of us are privileged to, you know, have cars and have goods and things. We can give our kids the good things. I wonder, can y'all relate to these communities, the people that stand down this gym, the people that's going to really affect? Y'all see, do y'all children go to the gym? I mean, some people voted for you all to represent them. This is not representing us. And I say to, to the audience, you know, our power is in voting. And if we feel like we ain't being represented, we need to vote them out.
All right.
Alfred Willer. Alfred Willer. Alfred Willer.
Good evening and thank you for your service. I wasn't going to speak, but.
What's your name, please?
My name is Reverend Linda Gaddis. I am the pastor of St. Paul AME Church on Rose Street. I was just at Stubbs Park a few weeks ago by myself. I needed some time to clear my mind and think. I'm also a teacher at Dublin City Schools. I went to the park and I sat and I saw three little girls. I know the age of one, because she's my student, she just got out of pre-K. The other ones looked much younger than she was. They were outside by themselves at Stubbs Park. They must have been about four years old. By themselves, no shoes on. If you put a pond, let me tell you, I grew up in a neighborhood with a pond. Every year, a child died on that pond. Summertime, they want to go and, and explore. Wintertime, when it froze up, well, I'm from New York, but the water froze up and they wanted to walk on that ice in the pond and they would wind up dying. And so it would behoove you to save you money, since you don't have much, it sounds like, to renovate. You can save a couple of thousand dollars by not putting that pond there and leaving your spirit and your conscience, because you have been warned. As I always say to my church, the blood is no longer going to be on our hands. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Trigger?
Good evening. I am most definitely behind all those persons that are here tonight, speaking for keeping Stubbs Park. We need Stubbs Park. I go to Stubbs Park. And we have children playing in that gym. They play basketball in that gym. They use it. And it's the children that live in the area that's doing it. So we don't want to take away anything from our children so that they can grow up to be productive citizens and do what's right. Keep Stubbs Park, keep that gym, because it's needed. Us old folk like going to Stubbs Park.
I'm Barbara Martin, the owner of Kids Kingdom. And I agree with the people, because I work with children. But my main thing when I voted in May, Mayor Kite, why was the issue of the mold not presented then? If mold was in Stubbs Park, it should have already been fixed, because a lot of us go to Stubbs Park. I take children around this city and different groups invite our children. It's about our future. It's about our heritage, it's about our legacy. We need that voting precinct. We even need some more voting precincts in Dublin. We have a right to voice our opinion. You have a right to present that proposal, but we also have a right to say we want to keep that park. It's a heritage, it's a legacy. And it's a voting place for the people, the elderly people. Think about our elderly people, think about the children that are coming up. It need to be accessible. Stubbs, Southern Pine, I go there too, but it's not representing our city. It's on the outskirts and us, a lot of people cannot walk to Southern. It's on the outskirts, and us, a lot of people cannot walk to Southern Pine, but they can walk to Stubbs Park.
And, yeah, the, and just, just to clarify, the, the city hadn't took over the management of this, of the Stubbs Park Gym on July 1st of this year, and that's when we did and started inventorying, taking photographs of the conditions in the gym. So this, this is very new for the city. For the last 25 years, Stubbs Park has been managed by the Recreation Authority. So this is, this is new for the city to, and that's why we're doing this, is to understand how we can best utilize our parks. So do we have any other comments? Yes?
My name is Anthony Smith. I'm a youth minister, mentor of kids here in, um, in Dublin now. I think the common consensus of everybody here is pretty much to keep the gymnasium. Um, and one thing that a gymnasium can do is that it can function as an activity center, whereas an activity center cannot function as a gymnasium. But there's something else that I want to kind of bring, um, to light that maybe hasn't been talked about is, you know, it's one thing to bring a facility, and I think Brother Curtis and I have talked about this ever since I moved back in 2016. Oh yeah, I moved away from Dublin in 1996, and that was around the time, few years Stubbs had just been built, in the early 90s. I came back in 2016, the gym still looks still the same. So the condition of the gym in that amount of time, I was gone for 20 years, that's a direct reflection of our Recreation Authority. The gym's look still the same as 1996, as it did in 2016. But here's the thing that I want to bring to the table, is that, you know, it's a good thing to, to make an investment in facilities, but we have to commit to making an investment in programming. To have a facility without, without a commitment into programming, I mean, what are we going to do? This is not a place, you know, what you do at Stubbs, uh, uh, Southern Pines is one thing, that's an income. It's going to, it's going to bring in revenue. But in a, in a, in a impoverished community, you cannot look for that facility to generate income. If it does, it's great. But as a city, if we're looking at recreation, and we know recreation is for enrichment, you know, it's for the mental, it's for the social, it's for all of this development in kids, and so we're not going to commit. Well, I'm saying, if we're going to, if we're going to commit to renovating or building a new facility, we also need to put on the table of investing in programming. Because it'd be one thing, it'd be a travesty to have a, a, a facility, but not be able to have, you know, we have to invest in programming, we have to invest in having supervisors there to make sure that things are done, so that people can be in place, you know, to be able to service the kids.
All right, thank you for those comments. I think we have another comment here. Please come on down and be sure to state your name and where you live.
My name is Michael Moody. I'm the pastor of Word and Seas of Ministries here in Dublin, Georgia, on Telfair Street. I live at 112 Holly Lakes Drive, which is technically considered the county. However, I pastor here in the city of Dublin. To piggyback on the young man that just spoke, um, yes, there is a lot that needs to be done as far as the programming along with the facility. However, our ministry has had the opportunity to use Stubbs Park and the gymnasium on several different occasions to, uh, do ministry out of there in, in lieu of the programming provided by the city itself, as far as, uh, feeding the hungry, clothing, uh, the needy, as also providing vaccinations for those during the COVID pandemic as well. And to see that facility in itself to be torn down would be a travesty, especially those, uh, that have ministries and programs that would bring, bring, uh, help to our community, especially those that cannot travel, uh, a far distance. And so, uh, I speak on behalf of, of the faith community and all those organizations that do well, uh, for the community in lieu of what is lacking maybe from the city in itself, and helping the needy, especially as the young lady spoke about the homeless population and those that may not have. And so, if we, uh, from a faith standpoint, my, my, my goal is if they can't come inside the four walls of the church, we can at least meet them out in their community where they live. And so, having that gym there is, is a, is a staple for what it is that men and women are trying to do, especially trying to help their community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Brandy, and I would like to invite you to experience our newly renovated mammography suite at the Fairview Park Hospital Breast Center. Our breast center has its own dedicated entrance with a relaxing boutique-like waiting area. You can make your appointment online anytime at fairviewparkhospital.com or by calling Most appointments take 30 minutes or less, and we will have your results back to your doctor within 24 hours.
Summer's here and the temperature's rising, so make a big splash with friends and family now with a pool from Georgia Pools. Or relax in a luxurious hot tub or sauna. No down payments and easy financing. Don't wait a year for your pool. Georgia Pools has the manpower to get the job done. Georgia Pools has a large selection of pool chemicals and accessories. We also have Traeger pellet grills, along with the pellets and accessories that you need to get you grilling today. Come see our selection of Yeti coolers, tumblers, cups, and more. Don't forget our collection of Big Green Egg grills and accessories. Call Georgia Pools today at 478-275-3607, or come by and see us at 1201 Hillcrest Parkway in Dublin.
All right, do we have anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Chiquita Anderson. I live on Highland Avenue. I wasn't planning on speaking, but, um, I like to travel a lot, and I don't think anybody's ever traveled to see water, unless they're going to the beach. A lot of things that was built, that people go to see, was built temporarily, but they're still there. And one of them that I saw was the Eiffel Tower. We need to build something right here to keep me at home. I did a lot of walking in Europe. I don't walk around Dublin. I was walking down from McDonald's downtown and back, and then they fixed the sidewalk, so I can start back doing that. I want to be able to walk down to that park to see something that's going to make other people come here, other than just in March. We need to start thinking like that. And something for those kids, because they're right. I don't have any, but I pay taxes. I don't have any, but I pay, you know, I, I do everything that I'm supposed to do. But I want to do it at home, instead of me still going to Europe. Let's build something that's going to take care of this community and make other people come here, so we don't have to spend all our money. Let's use theirs. Okay? Let's use theirs, and I won't be taking mine somewhere else. I could spend it here. That was one thing my dad told me. He said, I'd make my money somewhere else, but I spend it in Dublin. I'm making my money right now somewhere else, and I'm spending it somewhere else. I want to spend it in Dublin. Okay? I'm spending it in Dublin.
All right, thank you for those comments. Yes, please come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but, uh, when I heard about the Stubbs Park, it's, it's a personal issue for me. My son, his dedication is down there, his picture is down there, he's the only one down there. And it was dedicated to Jordan Thomas. My thing is, the reason he played down there, because that's where the kids were going. They enjoyed that. So instead of saying, tear it down, why not do something that's going to be best for the kids? It's not about us anymore. We got to find something for these kids to do. You can do computer classes, you can do any kind of class, help with GD, anything to help these kids. And I, like I said, it's a personal thing for me. And the last thing I want to say, if you're going to tear it down, please give me my son's plaque.
All right, thank you for that comment.
Good afternoon. My name's Carolyn Walker. Uh, Stubbs Park is kind of a landmark for me. I was born here in Dublin, but I didn't grow up in Dublin. When I moved to Dublin, I moved over in Stubbs Park area. And that was in the late 90s and early 2000s. I even left and moved back to Atlanta, kind of got the, um, feel of Dublin, the peace, the peace, serenity. So I moved back. And do you believe I moved right back in the Stubbs Park area and the exact apartment that I left?
Wow.
So that was a wonderful thing. I had a little dog. A lot of people know my dog. His name was Bosley. Bosley and I used to walk all around Stubbs Park. During that area, era, Stubbs Park was very active. They used to have the St. Patrick's Festival in that area. And it was really active, and Bosley and I would sit in the park and just watch the kids walk over in the gym and see them playing. It was, it was just always packed with kids. Now, my point is that nowadays, the electronic devices have consumed our children. We talk about they don't go outside to play or interact with each other enough. But the ones that still want to do that, let's not deprive them of that. Stubbs Park is, was a very fluent area for those kids. I've seen it, I used to see it. Don't take that away from them. Let's renovate it and continue to encourage the children to get outside and interact with each other.
Thank you for those comments. All right, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brenda Smith, and right now, I'm speaking as the Director of the Dublin Housing Authority. I also want you to know, and this is not for any credit, that I thoroughly support the Stubbs Park maintenance and renovation. As a matter of fact, the statements that Pastor Dixon read, I wrote that. But as the Director of the Dublin Housing Authority, I have a decision to make. Our children, Dublin City Schools, started back today. We run an after-school program, as well as a summer youth program. I saw the look on many of your faces when the statement was made that Oconius closed. You looked shocked.
I was shocked.
And I just want to know, did, do you know the capacity right now that it is running? Do you know, are you aware?
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Powell just confirmed that the Oconius Gym is open Monday through Thursday from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, how is it opened? How is it opened? From 4:00?
They unlock the door, and people can go in.
And they do what? They leave. They leave. And I'd just like to make this other statement as well. If you have never been to the gym or become a part of that gym, of that legacy, then surely you cannot understand why, as the other gentleman said, that it will never be about money there. You won't be there when elderly women, such as my church member, goes in the morning to walk around the track. And maybe it's just she and, used to be, uh, the director, Curtis Smith. You will never understand why, even in these last two weeks, after we had our summer closing program, my husband went by the gym, yes, he is my husband, went by the gym to get something, and the gym was wide open. All lights were on. It had been trashed. But the thing that bothered me most was there was a child in there by himself. And my husband asked, "What are you doing here?" And he said, he didn't know, but that's what he always does when there was supervision there. So the, okay, one other thing, and I will sit down, because I have a decision to make. Our kids have started back to school. We, in the past, used the gym on Thursday to give them an, an opportunity to run around. When we left that gym after the summer program, there were elements there that I had never seen before, without any supervision. So until you all develop a plan of action, we don't feel safe sending our children there. And I don't feel safe for other children to go. Thank you.
North, south, east, or west, Friendly Gus is on your way today. Fuel up with Friendly Gus' delicious breakfast, made fresh every day. Your wallet and your belly will thank you. Choose from our 20, 40, and 60-piece chicken finger and wing platters. And don't forget the tater logs. Our food is always fresh and our service is always friendly. Friendly Gus, on your way today. Also shop Cochrane Brothers Cash and Carry at 320 South Jefferson in Dublin for additional items like paper products, chicken wings, bulk drinks, spices, sauces, and more.
You ready to meet the latest addition to the family? The money you saved us with auto owners helped make it all possible.
It really is the best thing that's ever happened to me.
Excuse me?
Third best thing.
Third best thing.
Auto Owners offers discounts for life, home, car, and business insurance, because they think the more you protect, the more you should save. That simple human sense.
Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin and Augusta if auto owners make sense for you.
All right, any other comments? Any other comments this evening?
Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Walker. I grew up on the South Side. I live in East Dublin now, but I grew up on the South Side. But I am the treasurer of a youth football team. We use that park, we use the gym to help the kids, to keep the kids out the streets. And in order to continue to do that, I mean, closing places down, taking the people away that help, you know, oversee the facilities and everything, it's, it's not good. It's not good at all. You know, to keep these places open and about Stubbs Park, over there, you tearing down a gym to put a pond over there for children to drown? For children to drown? It's a lot of kids that walk over there in that area by themselves, that we don't need no pond. If you want to put something over there, put a facility over there that, hey, a recreation that, a, a pool that's, that's, that's enclosed, yes, that's enclosed. Put something over there that they can use. Not no pond. Half of us don't go no fishing. What, you gonna put some fish in there? We don't go no fishing, half of us don't go fishing. You don't need no pond over there. Not for the youth. The, the, uh, gym is a polling place. It's one of the biggest polling places in the city of Dublin. Hey, that's, that's disenfranchised me, if you, if that's what you want to call me. You close that place down over there, where are the people of the city of Dublin is going to go vote? It's, it's one of the biggest voting precincts in the city of Dublin. Where are they going to go? They got to go miles and miles away to vote? Then they won't vote. But if you keep that place open, renovate it. Put new bathrooms in there. Put new ceilings in there. Do something besides using the people's money for personal gain. Yeah, use the money for what it need to be done, used for. Use it for what it need to be used for. Use it for what it need to be used for. People pay taxes. What are they paying taxes for if you're gonna use the money for your own personal gain? I guarantee you, all y'all sitting up there, get paid good. Y'all get paid good. Well, I say it like this right here. Some of y'all might get paid good. But guess what? Stop paying your pockets and put something in this community. Stop paying your pockets and put something in the community.
Ms. Walker, your time is up.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any comments? All right, we have another comment. Everybody, please.
My name is Mary Jo Bracewell, and I use the Stubbs Park. I am a Lawrence County citizen, and I use the Activity Building. And I agree with all these people, it don't need to be tore down. It does need to be renovated. And I would like to see the festivals come back to the park. Also, I wish you'd have had this meeting before the roundabout was built. You could have spent the money on the park. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments.
I want to thank Josh.
All right, thank you for those comments. Do we have anyone else who wants to make a comment? Anybody else who wants to make a?
I want, uh...
Wait, you guys state your name and...
Sally Underwood from Dublin Housing Authority.
Right. Now, Ms. Underwood, you've already made a comment this evening.
Yeah, I wanted to make one thing, and that's it.
All right, so we'll give you just one minute, okay? Because you've already spoken.
When the Oconee Gym, when y'all re-mallet, I'm not going by what somebody said or what somebody heard. I'm going by on what I seen. Will y'all be able to bring Mr. Smith back to the gym? Because he's good with the kids. He keeping under control. And, you know, I would love to see him back at the Oconee Gym.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. All right, so you've already spoken, Mr. Walters?
I'm gonna ask a question that I don't understand.
All right, well, come on up and let's, you have one minute, and then we really need to, okay?
Kenny Walters, on July the 1st, what you, I heard you said that y'all took over all the parks.
That's correct.
I mean, I was understanding that the county recreation, the city recreation had a merger agreement. What, I mean, what was so magical about July the 1st?
Yeah, sure. So just for, basically, in the late 1990s, the city leased all its parks, the neighborhood parks, including Stubbs and the Stubbs Gym and Oconee and Hillburn. All those parks were leased for a dollar a year to the Joint Dublin Lawrence Recreation Authority. On July 1st, that lease agreement ended, and those parks came back to the city of Dublin.
So it expired.
That's right. And basically, we had a, you know, an agreement that, as to how that would work and what the transition would look like. So that's why this summer...
A dollar a month, six fifty a year.
Well, that was separate, but the lease agreement was a dollar a month.
I didn't really understand that, but you kept saying that, going like, what happened?
Yeah, so July 1st, that's why we're doing all this stuff. The master planning, the concept planning, the public input, the community listening sessions, is because this year's the first year since the 1990s that the city has had management of the parks.
It makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
The weather's heating up here in Middle Georgia, and the deals are hot at Dublin Nissan. So when you come in, look for the red-tag specials like this Nissan Altima or the new restyled 2024 Frontier. So come into Dublin Nissan during our red-tag sale and take advantage of 0% financing or up to $10,000 savings off of MSRP.
At Dublin Nissan, get rates as low as 0% for 36 months on the Pathfinder.
And remember, Don sells Nissans well, only at Dublin Nissan.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy. Here at Dublin Wood Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest-quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From Moen to Renai, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin Wood Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find park, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business
All right, any other comments this evening? All right, if there are no other comments, I'm going to turn it over to council for closing comments. But first, let's see, do we have our, Mr. Gordon, any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Browning, any comments?
No comment, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mascaro, any comments?
Just want to thank everybody. Just want to thank everybody for coming out. When we started this meeting, I had an opinion to look at both things, both sides of the story, or the viewpoints openly. And ultimately, everything that you say is compelling. I remember the influence of the Rec Authority in my childhood and the ability of me to access it. It didn't always keep me out of trouble, but by and large, it kept me out of trouble. And I hear, I hear what you're saying. I just want the citizens to know that everything that the mayor and council have done goes with a lot of thought. And I think that the transparency that we're trying to display and asking you questions is exactly what we're supposed to be doing. And if you don't come and respond, then it's a one-sided conversation. And we can't make good decisions for our community talking to ourselves. And I just want everybody to understand that I know that everybody that sits on this council, the mayor and the city manager, we're listening. We're listening. And I just want you to keep coming and keep telling us what you think, and we have to make decisions. And we're not going to please everybody all the time. But we're going to do our best to make everybody happy. You are our taxpayers, and we are running, and our job is to steward your money in the way that you want us to do it. So at the end of the day, you've spoken, and I appreciate it. And just want to thank everybody for coming out.
All right, thank you for those comments. Mr. Smith?
I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Everyone coming out today, I mean, it's amazing how we can come together on an issue such as this and show our, and voice our concerns, man. Like, we work for you guys. You guys elected us, we doing what's best for you and what you guys want, not us, not these seven seats. We taking consideration, a lot of things, but we're doing this for you. And for everyone to come out tonight and voice your opinion and tell us what you want is just amazing to me. And council has a decision to make. I mean, the citizens came and told us that they want their gym. And when I say gym, I mean G-E-M. Stubbs Park is the gym in the community. And if you leave a gym unattended for 30-plus years, it's gonna get dusty. I mean, we relying on the city to come in and polish it up. And once you polish that gym, what does it do? It shines again. So I just want to thank everyone for coming and voicing your opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Councilman Griggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming, taking your time out to come express your opinions about these things that we've discussed tonight, and certainly do appreciate it. Y'all have a great week and stay safe.
All right, thank you. I guess Councilman Brown left. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, ma'am. I want to first, with the last one of y'all a hand that came up and spoke and for coming out tonight, I just said, this is what it's all about. I want to congratulate fellow council people that got their awards tonight for keep on training, don't let the training stop there. That's how you want to get better and learn from other cities. I go to these trainings, I learn from other cities and bring back ideas that will build our community. And before Stubbs go, I remember Stubbs was built before I left to go out. I was off in college when it was built. I remember coming home, they talking about, oh, this gym open, seeing everybody at this gym. When I came back home, I started coming home, I started noticing the gym got closed to the public. The people forget that that gym was built on the back of the residents in Vincent Village. That was a federal grant that built that, using statistics from Vincent Village to build that. Now, Stubbs is not in my ward, but I know the effect that it have of my ward because of Vincent Village and those children that stay over there. When I moved back home, I publicly sought to open that gym up for free. The rec department told me no. When I got elected 2016, I was encouraged by Mr. Gary Johnson to go tell him I want to open up that gym again. They handed me a key. I started opening up that gym and letting the kids come and play in. And they looked at me, I'll never forget the first day I opened that gym up. You had a generation of kids that had never seen the inside of that gym, because they was told they couldn't come play in that gym. People forget about that. So now you talking about tearing down something that they just started coming back to, so looking in and getting to play in. They thought they was at Madison Square Garden, they start looking around, oh, we get to play in this gym. I'll never forget that. I've had parents come up to me when I opened up that gym for two years for free, sat down there two years for free, making sure that gym got open for those kids to play and open up. They're like, man, we thank you. See, my cat, I came to my, they were coming to Stubbs Gym, I told them, no, they can't because Stubbs Gym ain't, it's not open. I had people I went to school with, oh, that's true. I said, yes, I'm opening up, this gym is open. Yes, man, we sure do thank you. Because I even had a citizen had a desk that asked me one time, you open up that gym, it could be a liability for the city if somebody get hurt. My response was, what you think could be more of a liability? If a kid have a heat stroke out there playing in the outside goal, and it's a gym right there for them to play on that was built on the back of their, or their statistic, and they can't do it, and the parent's side to sue the city? That citizen looked at me and was like, never thought of it that way. I love green space, love to see green space out there. But it's a lot you could do with that green space besides a pond and all of that. There you put a splash pass, somebody mentioned that. Something that nobody never thought about, you have a football field, battlefield football field, there used to be football, Dublin J Football Field, something that we don't have, even the rec department, even the rec authority don't have. They have an AAU track team. Ask them where they practice at. You could take that, turn it into a track field for them to come practice at and do their track and field events right there. You already got the stain. I'm just throwing out some ideas, we go talking about, put in the green space, ain't trying to plant all these trees, I'm trying, you can make it nice and beautiful for people to do things. I've seen people walk around there, so I hope that our council people has listened to the citizen. I invite y'all back August 15th to look these same council people in the eyes, and they make this vote on what they want, on which one of these concepts and what we want to do. Come back August 15th and look these same council members in their eyes and see how they vote. Lip talk is cheap. I started seeing that this got a lot of traction, once Councilman Smith started posting on Facebook and did that flyer, all the stuff that came. We don't see some stuff to try to scare people, no more throwing out. I'm gonna tell you what's wrong with Stubbs Gym, it need a roof. The floor need redid. You fix the roof, yeah, you got to redo the floor that hadn't been red, that hadn't did in a long time. The goals, you need to replace all the goals, that's in that it need replacing. The upstairs need to be, the stairwell need to be demated where it is cold, the stairwell is cold, up to cold order. You got a whole upstairs of Stubbs Gym that's above cold. I've had code enforcement from Dublin City to Dublin look at that. It's 30s, I don't know what, just being wasted, a waste. It's a, it's a brand-new treadmill and weight equipment sitting in one of those rooms, never been used. Go look in the gym. You walk in and look at that first door to your, that second door to your left and look in the gym. I'm gonna tell you, yeah, it's there. So, yeah, it's a gym, as Mr. Smith said, in the community that needs to be shining up, not to be thrown away. So I'm glad y'all came out, I'm glad y'all spoke up. Come back August 15th and see what the result gonna be. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey?
Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming out today, and I appreciate everybody speaking on Stubbs Park and the gym and the pond. However, I would love it if you all would come out and speak up or against some of the problems that we're having in our city, like the violence and the crime, the high speeders on Rutland Drive, the raggedy streets that we have on South Church and Mary Street, Decatur Street, Lily Church, Carter New Simmons. I wish you all would do the same, bring the same energy for those type of things. I respect everybody for what they said about the gym, but we have so many other bigger fish to fry that I wish everybody else could just come back with the same energy, slow the traffic down, work on the dilapidated houses, the convenience stores that are in our communities that are rundown. So I just want everybody to come together and work on things like that as well. So thank you, and I appreciate you all coming out tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. When we knew that this was going to be not a hot topic issue, but an issue that a lot of people would want to talk about, and we discussed it in pre-council, and we wanted to give the full opportunity for anyone who wanted to speak their mind about what's going on in our parks. The parks have been one of our primary focuses over the last two years. I'm excited that when this all began two and a half years ago, one of our primary things was seeing that our parks were not being well taken care of under the agreement that we had before, and we wanted to see something change. And so this is a part of that. This is improving our parks. We're going to start seeing movement in not just Stubbs Park, but all across our city in the city-owned and managed and operated parks. So I'm excited to see what will come. Don't judge by what's happened in one month. It's going to take more than one month to make some difference here. And I will tell you, it's not just about beauty and what we want in a facility, but it's also about safety. And I have never seen this many people come to council, even when we've had shootings all over this town, I've never seen so many people come to this council to speak about a gym. I want some people talking about the dead kids on the street. And I, kudos to Tess for calling it out, because we each have to take care of our own backyard first before we have a gym to take care of. So when we're talking about supervising our kids, this is a very big concern to me. When we have a gym, we have to have supervision, right? So we're talking about all those things because they're important. Safety is important. Beauty is important. Having access to these is just the cherry on the top. But we got to have safety and beauty in our community and pride in what we already have as well. So I just want to thank each of you for coming out and expressing your opinion. It's important. It's important to take good care of our parks. It's important to take care of what we have personally. So thank you so much for coming and speaking your mind, and especially the improvements that are going to come.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. Any comments this evening?
No.
All right, well, I want to thank everyone for coming. I think we may have set a new record at 7:45, but all of us committed to listening and getting your comments this evening, and we will take those comments and see what we can do to continue improving Dublin. I will say this, I think our town is in a really positive direction. There are a lot of great things happening. There's a lot of energy, and the fact that all of you here means that you are excited and energetic and involved, and you care. If you didn't care, if you given up, you wouldn't be here.
That's right.
And I think that is a terrific sign that we have this much energy, and I look to harness that energy to continue improving our community. This meeting is now adjourned.